Grant. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Mr. President.
Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation by Councilmember Franklin Thompson?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could bow our heads. Lord, we pray that elected officials would ask for discernment, especially in the area of knowing the difference between economic and social perspectives that lead to temporary victories on one hand versus the type of wisdom that you demand from us in order to build a true and lasting community in Omaha for all people. Amen.
City Clerk serves as publication of the Daily Record, official newspaper on August 26th, known for its regular city council meeting, August 30th, 2016. The current copy of old meetings act is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would encourage you, we would ask you to please turn off or mute any electronic devices. Mr. Clerk?
Resolution, very preliminary platton, platt's item number five. Resolution, preliminary platton title, Shadow View Village located northwest of HWS Cleveland Boulevard and West Center Road along with attached conditions hereby accepted and preparation of final platters hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number five is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 1144 West Center Road appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is a preliminary platton that's before you today. This comes to you with favorable recommendations from the various departments as well as the planning board. I'm simply here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Motion. Second. Moved and seconded to approve item five. No further lights, roll call.
Grenat. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Five is adopted, seven to zero. Item number six, resolution, the revised preliminary platton title, Waterford Village, located northwest of 144th and Ida Street along with attached conditions hereby accepted, preparation is final platters hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Kyle Bull, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, here representing the applicant. Feel free to, I'm available to answer any questions you might have on the project.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item six, no lights, roll call.
Grenat. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Six is adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7, eight, due to no meaning being held September 6th. Agenda items number seven through eight shall be laid over three weeks to September 20th for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda item number nine shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, item number 10, Beacon Hills, 6750 Mercy Road, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
John Hughes, 11550 I Street.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry.
One second. We might as well read up 11.
Okay.
They go together. Eleven is a catering license for the same applicant, the same location.
Okay. Public hearing on agenda items 10 and 11 are today. Proponents, please.
Thank you. John Hughes, Beacon Hills, Omaha LLC, 11550 I Street. New restaurant in Exarvan Village, full-service bar, restaurant, private dining, catering facility. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 10 and 11. No further lights, roll call.
Grenat. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Ten and eleven are adopted, seven to zero. Item number 12, Tanner's Bar and Grill, 3809 North Ninety Street, Class I liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This will be the seventh Tanner's in the state of Nebraska. Would that be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 12, no lights, roll call.
Grenat. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Jerem passed the second time for a potential conflict of interest. Twelve is adopted, six, zero, one, passing. Item number 13 is Stroud, 301 North 175th Plaza, Class I liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, Chris Booth, 301 North 175th Plaza, Village Point, representing Stroud's Restaurant.
Any, answer any questions you might have? Okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is a motion? Moved and seconded to approve item 13, no lights, roll call.
Grenat. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirteen is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 14, Heritage Food and Wine, 316 South 15th Street, request permission for deletion from their Class C liquor license in an area 75 by 14 to the north.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, everybody. I'm Matt Corso, General Manager of the Hotel Deco, 1504 Harney Street. I'm here if anyone has any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, you do have a light on there. Thank you. Ms. Milton?
I just wanted to thank Hotel Deco. Yesterday, Crime Stoppers had a big fundraiser, and Hotel Deco came and was one of the sponsors of that fundraiser, and they were wonderful, did a great job, and Crime Stoppers, I think, has done a great job. So I just wanted to, if you could pass on that thank you, and I wanted to recognize you for doing that.
We've been excited all day. Chef's been overly excited.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been already moved and seconded to approve item 14. No further lights, roll call.
Grenat. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Fourteen is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 15, Minabella, 364, 368 North 114th Street, request permission for an addition to their present Class I liquor license of an area approximately 22 by 19, to be known as the Wine Room.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, I am Chad Cradler, 366 North 114th, Minabella Beer Resort. We're just basically moving our bar into a new location within basically the same building.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 15, no lights, roll call.
Grenat. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Fifteen is approved, seven to zero. Item number 16, a resolution that Big Red is granted approval to operate a satellite Keno location at Blazin Pianos, 15240, 15244 West Maple Road.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 11248 John G. Boulevard. I have with me today Keith, he's the owner of Blazin Pianos, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 16, no lights, roll call.
Grenat. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Sixteen is adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken out by City Council following the consent agenda in the order in which they are removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearing on agenda items number 17 through 20 were held on August 23rd, 2016. Is a motion? Second. Moved and seconded to approve about 16, 17 through 20, no lights, roll call.
Grenat. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Seventeen through 20 are passed, seven to zero. We are going to remove item number 28 from the consent agenda. And 27? Okay, 27 and 28.
Twenty-seven and 28 from the agenda, okay. Public hearing on agenda items numbers 21 through 26, 28 through 34 are today.
29 through 34.
29 through 34 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, your address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second. No lights, roll call.
Grenat. This is on items 21 through 26, 29 through 34. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
21 through 26, 29 through 34, adopted, seven to zero. Now we'll take up items, item number 27, resolution that professional services agreement with AGA Consulting for professional services associated with a parking facility, lighting, and electrical needs study project is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number 27 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, on this item, it's some of the same comments be made on item 28 is these are back-to-back consulting agreements. This one happens to be for studying the lighting systems in the city's parking garages in terms of updating them. And it's my belief that these type of items are best served when the city council's committee process is respected and they work their way through the committee to share with the council just why these sorts of consulting agreements are needed and the justification. And oftentimes, as a result of that process, their questions are answered. Other times, the council members have input, the consulting agreements get refined, improved, expanded. And in this particular one, those statements would hold true, but the additional question arises with regard to the purpose and need, particularly when the city, in the city-county building, through our building commission that we have representation on, had similar light, old-style, high-energy-consuming lights in the parking garage below this building, and it was a obvious conclusion that they should be updated to LED lights. And I don't recall that the building commission had hired a consultant or that the consultant needed to be paid $50,000 to draw the conclusion that, yes, these are old lights, they need to be removed, they will save a lot of energy by going to LED. So I don't know, as I sit here, enough about this, and I think that it would be best if we could allow additional information to lay this one and the next one over for two weeks to get those questions answered. I don't see Ken Smith here from the parking manager, and maybe he's unavailable today, but to me, when you do these things, and I get questions from constituent as to why we're spending this money on this, and then I have to ask the question myself, I mean, I don't know, I don't remember when the city's parking garage was converted to LED that we needed to do this, so that's a very good question. As I sit here today, I can't answer that, so I think we should lay this over for two weeks, and that would be my motion.
Second. I'll second it, please, guys. Mr. Grenat.
Vote on this first, or we're going to do both of them, or can we do both?
We're going to do the first one. We're just going to do 27.
I want to speak on 28.
Okay. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to lay item number 27 over for two weeks, there are no lights, roll call.
Grenat. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-seven is laid over, six to one. Item number 28, resolution that the professional services agreement with DW Conchig for a study of the city of Omaha snow plan is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number 28 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I would repeat, basically incorporate in this public hearing and council member comments most of what I just said, so I won't repeat it. I would say that a pre-council, in addition to the comments I made, I heard that the hope on this one was to get the report in time for this season. After the pre-council meeting, I was looking at the contract, and another question was raised because on the first page of the agreement, the deliverable is 180 days. So that's March by my calculations, so that would put us after the season anyway. But having said that, this, one of the things we're supposed to provide this consultant is data, data the committee hasn't seen, the council hasn't seen, and I think it would be helpful to us as this agreement gets considered to have that additional information, too. So I would make the same motion to lay this over for two weeks.
Second. Mr. Grenat.
Thank you, Mr. President. When this broke in the newspaper, I started getting calls at home this weekend, and I think I can sum up the message that was given to me over the weekend about this in probably more public language. We've had, I was reminded on more than one occasion this weekend, the mayor has had in the last three years 21 town halls, and snow was mentioned, at least the ones that I attended, that was part of the discussion. The seven of us in the last three years in various capacities. I know the Public Works Committee has talked about it. When I was on the Public Works Committee, we talked about it, and we've all here, and I know my colleague, Councilmember Thompson, over the last 15 years, that we've given suggestions to the Public Works Department about the snow plan, where critical areas are, what we feel would be appropriate, and shared that with them. The caller told me, he says, "You guys ought to feel like you've been slapped right smack in the kisser." And I said, "Well, could you explain?" He says, "Well, yeah, that's..." All these things over the years that you've shared, what they've been told, you're telling me that there's not somebody at City Hall that can take all of that information and come up with Omaha's best practice and not bring in someone from Ohio to tell us under a set of what they, fresh eyes? And I'll stop right there and say, we've had consultants in the past, in all the years that I've been up here, some of them have done an awesome job. They've provided information, they've provided best practices, but we're being told that this hasn't been reviewed for, I think it was 10 years, if I remember correctly, that this, a set of fresh eyes wouldn't hurt, and we're going to spend $50,000 for this. Well, this caller told me, he says, "I got a better idea on the 50 grand. You get two professionals from each one of the six neighborhood alliances that is described in the contract that has expertise in that area, bring them down here under the pretext that we're going to divide that $50,000 six ways, take their information, and they go back and they have a snow and ice project done in their alliance area, and the money stays right here in Omaha." I said, "I'll pass that on." It is difficult, and I agree with Councilmember Jerem, that when we get called or tapped on the shoulder and say, "Hey, I read this," or something, and we get sort of blindsided with it, I don't know, "I'll get back to you." But yet those that do take the time, like this one caller, and was able to find out some information, make some suggestions, and asked his elected representative to bring it forward, you utilize this, these next two weeks that this passes as a timeframe to review all of that. And I also agree with Councilmember Jerem that it seems a portion of the process that's in place that this should have started with didn't happen. There's some disagreement to that, okay. We lay this over, we get through that part, we get this data that's promised, that's been generated so far, and I believe that include a written survey, fill-in-the-blank-type survey, that information, plus the town halls, plus the three years of what we've been passing on, and maybe even more, at least for two of us here on the council over the years, that we can come up with Omaha, Nebraska's best practices. So I'm going to, if we were going to vote today, I would vote no on this. We got, it looks like we do have a possibility of this one being laid over as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. My only comment is that I can't wait to see the information or the rest of the documentation on this, because I'm having a hard time understanding what the necessity is for this. So if it were today, I would be a no with you, Mr. Grenat. But anyway, it's been moved and seconded to lay over two weeks, there are no lights, roll call.
Grenat. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-eight's laid over two weeks, six to one. Resolutions, item number 35, resolution that attached University of Nebraska Medical Center IXL redevelopment plan prepared by the Omaha City Planning Department being hereby is approved as the redevelopment plan for the redevelopment area generally bounded by Emily Street on the north, 41st Street on the east, Leavenworth Street on the south, and 42nd Street on the west.
Public hearing on agenda item number 35 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road appearing on behalf of the University of Nebraska Medical Center. With me today is Bob Barti with the Med Center. He's a Vice Chancellor for External Affairs. Also with me today, and will be speaking immediately after my presentation, is Dr. Pam Boyers. She's the Associate Vice Chancellor for Interprofessional Education and Experiential Learning. So as Buster said, this is located Leavenworth to the south, Emily Street to the north, 41st Street to the east, and 42nd Street to the west. The total site is about 3.8 acres. Again, this redevelopment plan will allow for what we're calling, or what the Med Center is calling, the IXL project. The project is approximately $102 million. It will consist of 190,000 square feet, foot building, 134,000 square feet will be the medical learning facility, and there'll be a 56,000 square foot parking facility as well. The breakdown of the funds is 66 million from the private sector. There's $25 million being contributed by the state of Nebraska. And then, of course, we get to the redevelopment plans before you today, the calls for $5,162,400 in redevelopment bond proceeds, and also $5.5 million from the CIP. And the CIP is going to be funded in 2022, and I think that is in your budget in the CIP that you'll be approving here, I believe, today. The redevelopment bond proceeds are going to help defray those costs that are traditionally TIF-eligible, primarily site preparation costs. So everything that the redevelopment bonds will go for are what would traditionally be TIF-eligible if this was a for-profit-type redevelopment project. As far as the CIP funds, they will be used to help defray off-site public infrastructure costs that the Med Center was otherwise going to have to pay for. We believe that the project has a substantial economic impact in not only the city of Omaha but the state of Nebraska generally. I do have some handouts for all of you and one for the clerk for the record. I'll hand these out. Most of you have probably seen this information, but the first handout is an informational sheet that discusses what the potential economic impact will be to the city of Omaha and the state of Nebraska. It was prepared by Tripp Umback, an independent third-party economic impact expert. So you'll see where they call for 325 permanent jobs, about $39.3 million in annual economic impact. There's some other information on there as well. This was, you'll note, at the five-year mark after the project is developed, the second handout answers the question of what is IXL, and Dr. Pam Boyers is going to explain a little bit about that as well. Also in that packet, there are letters of support from David Brown of the Chamber of Commerce, as well as some state senators, and then there are some letters from some industry collaborators as well that will be collaborating with the University of Nebraska Med Center on this particular project as far as the technology and how this will all work, and you'll understand that more after Dr. Pam Boyers gives her brief presentation. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to her, and then we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. The next step in the process, of course, is the redevelopment agreement that should be before you by the end of September. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Boyers.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Pamela Boyers. I live at 120 South 31st, Omaha, and it's a pleasure to be here, Mr. President, honorable council members. Thank you for this opportunity to tell you about this exciting project today, and especially for outlining how it can be of economic benefit to the city of Omaha. This is the global center of which you hear, great deal, I believe. It houses a transformative model for the education of healthcare professionals. What that means is that we're using simulation in healthcare, just as other high-risk industries are, to improve quality, safety, and help reduce the costs of healthcare by using simulation, just as aviation, transportation, nuclear power, and other industries have done. It consists, you can see, of three floors, and this floor houses a kind of simulation that you've been, you'll hear more about today, and that is three-dimensional and virtual immersive reality and holographic technology. It houses technology-like caves and immersive environments that you can literally get into and create anything that you want to. You can create outer space, you can fly through the earth, you can go to any country, you can create any disaster scenario, any inpatient hospital scenario. It really is only limited to the imagination, and you can actually fly through these spaces. The second floor is advanced simulation where we have patient robots, human patient simulators that can be programmed to be any kind of patient possible, and there is where the healthcare practitioners learn how to take care of patients safely and efficiently, and to manage very, very complex and difficult scenarios. And these human patient robots are in hospital, simulated hospital environment, so it's just like being in a real hospital setting, and teams learn how to work together to take care of these patients. On the third floor is a third kind of simulation, and that is surgical simulation. As advanced a simulation is these days, you cannot use plastic models or even virtual reality to teach people how to do advanced procedures such as complicated surgeries, and this is where we use fresh tissue. Now, the extraordinary thing about this center is while each floor works together to create the whole, and it's highly attractive to global and industry and other partners because they can work with the subject matter experts at Nebraska Medicine, UNMC, and others in the city to create new ways of doing things, because that is what virtual immersive reality can do for us in simulation, give us new ways of looking at the world and new ways to create new products. So it's this center that forms a hub for economic development as well as for training. And while we have the technology available to us, and some of you saw that wonderful technology today, the problem is that there's a global shortage of people who now know how to run and manage the technology, how to develop it, and even more importantly, how to create the content that you use to teach and to research. to teach and to research and to make a difference in the world. And so we believe, and we've researched this extensively, that we need to not only create this center for training, but we must create a workforce development hub, an intellectual hub in partnership with industry and the local community to be able to develop new jobs. So this is the, one of the components that we think is really, really important for the city. And it will also attract highly qualified people to the area. We are already, for example, have companies looking to move to the area as well as attracting people from other parts of the state and the world who want to help work and do study and do research here. So this is our 3D and virtual immersive reality on what we call a CAD wall, which is a large curved wall. You can only see it in 2D here. But I'm just going to demonstrate a little bit about how fantastic it is, what a fantastic new technology it is. And what can happen is our digital learners, as they all are now, many of us have children and grandchildren who are very digital, they've been raised with the digital technology. They can interact and even fly through a heart, fly through a human body. And we can even bring real patient data into these centers to look at disease in a very, very different way. So this is an example of what 3D and virtual immersive reality can do and how it can change the world. But this content that you see here, this eye content, is only one module, and we need to develop with other companies these modules that can be distributed to market. There's a company called Eon Reality, and you'll see in your folders that they've already signed a memorandum of understanding with us. They're very eager to work with us to help to distribute these modules that we create worldwide. Go back one. I believe some of you already experienced the holo lens today, is that correct? I'm glad you were able to see it for yourself because it's one thing to talk about and yet...
With holo lens, you can see the muscles on top of the skeleton all at the same time. You can bring them in and out and exactly understand where things sit.
You can take any anatomical part and show any of it. You can move it around, you can make it kind of translucent so you can see through the outside, and that really helped me understand like how cardiac anatomy worked. I actually had a moment where I found the aortic valve, and it was the first time that I'd actually seen the aortic valve in relation to all the other anatomical structures. You know, it was a way of seeing it that you couldn't do with an actual heart.
So it gives you a sense of the different kind of imagery that has to be created, the different type of skill sets that we need to develop in order to produce these products. So what are the opportunities and what are the new kinds of jobs? Well, they're very varied. There are jobs in 3D rendering, simulation technicians. We use people from the gaming industry. Most gaming is entertainment, but it's now bringing these skills to serious work. It's technology integrators, and it's, we need special program managers. We also need creative jobs. We need people who are graphic artists and 3D animators. And they all have to learn how to work together in, to create these incredible content modules and the new kinds of software. From a business opportunity perspective, with our relationship with global and local companies, and they like all three floors, by the way, they like the constellation of the three floors, we will develop spin-off companies and bring new business to Omaha. And I think in your packets, you have letters of support from these four companies who have already, they're major companies, who have already indicated a strong interest in working with us. And they are global companies. One of them I've mentioned is Eon Reality that does digital workforce development and software development. CAE Healthcare is one of the others, and they have expertise in the human patient robots and other kind of clinical medical simulators where they can teach ultrasound, for example. Carl Stor's Endoscopy is a surgical instrumentation company. They like to work with this, with this facility because they're creating new instrumentation all the time, and you can design these new instruments using these 3D environments. And AVISPL are our technology integrators who bring their expertise. And by the way, they're already negotiating to open an office in Omaha, and they intend to hire eight people. They've hired one already very quickly. So that is our global center, that is IXL. And if you're interested, we would love to have you over. We have some of the early equipment already. We have a 3D CAD wall that's just been installed, for example. And we have something called an interactive multitaction wall, which is already being put to use. And we would love to host you and show you those in person because, as I said earlier, to experience it is very different than hearing about it. So again, thank you for this opportunity. We really believe that the global center, this state-of-the-art training facility, will be a hub for creating intellectual capital. It really has the potential to place Omaha on the cutting edge, not only creating a pipeline for new kinds of jobs, but also attracting many visitors, much talent, and other businesses to Omaha. So thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? CNN Public Hearing is closed. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you. If I could get Dr. Boyers and maybe also Bob, if you could come up too, both of you. Identify yourselves one time, please.
I'm Bob Barti, reside at 521 Beverly Drive.
Pamela Boyers, thirty-one, I'm sorry, 120 Thirty-first Street, Omaha.
Thank you. Both of you have mentioned economic impact, and you mentioned new jobs. How many jobs was that again, that you created?
I think that what we'd estimated in the first five years was 325.
Three hundred and twenty.
Two twenty-five.
Twenty-five new jobs? And then there was mention of spin-off companies. So you could potentially create more jobs that way and increase the tax base, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other economic, because a lot of my constituents want to know the economic impact. So any other comments you'd like to make about that before I continue?
We, I think Pam mentioned that there would be 20,000 estimated visitors at the outset, first year they would be open. They will be coming from not only just in the region, but throughout the United States and some throughout the world.
So these could be week-long stays or maybe even month-long stays?
Training sessions, yes.
Okay. Excellent, excellent. And then regarding the academic value, the academic leadership and the expert knowledge part of it, obviously, there are going to be other cities that are gonna do things. But are we in a position to be the leader? And is there, are we able to capture some patents? Are there, what, talk to me about Omaha being the main, you know, cog in this whole machine.
Let me make a couple of comments, and Pam, you can join in. But I think first off, that the number-one testament that we can become that is these four global companies. They would not be signing memorandums of understanding with us if they don't, didn't think that we were gonna be first to market on some of these, the software and the kinds of things that Pam mentioned. So there's a real excitement out in the global community because healthcare is lagged behind these other industries. And because the human body is so complex, to be able to do a 3D model has been really, really difficult. And so what we would have at our campus, and we will be getting UNO and Metro Community College involved in this too, we would have the expertise that will say, this is, a physician will come in and say, "I would like to have this module on this particular gallbladder situation." And we would have that person and work with these new people that we would be recruiting to come to campus or be in these private companies that would then do, have the expertise that Pam mentioned, to create that model, that software. And then there would be another, a company that's spin-off that would market that to not only just us, but to the rest, the rest of the world.
Would you then get royalties and residuals?
We have the university, if the idea stems from a university faculty member, there's a specific agreement that is worked out through the university and the faculty member to have, I think it's split about a third, a third, and a third.
And, and so it becomes a moneymaker for curriculum modules that you can sell to the rest of the nation? Okay, I think that's important for people to know.
Did you have anything else, Pam?
Well, I'd like to comment as a fairly newcomer to Omaha, and I've traveled the world fairly extensively to look at what is happening out there and to choose the best things to bring to Omaha. But in my experience, Omaha has the essential ingredients to do this, has an extraordinary medical community and medical facility with incredible subject matter experts. And in order for this to be successful, it has to have real substance. You can't just have technology and no substance. It has an incredible community that's committed to improving the community, improving care, and they're stepping forward to help with that. So, and then with the experience that the team has that is creating this, creating the business opportunities and making them really work, starting with these large global industry partners, I think it has all the ingredients for success.
But from my point of view, we have a chance here to not just help a local university, but to actually help create Omaha to be sort of like a medical place or destination?
That is correct.
Okay.
Especially not only for care, but also for, for training, for high-level training. Because the world is changing very fast, and medicine's getting more technological all the time, and there need to be safe and competent places for people to learn.
Yes.
And keep up to date.
That's a good segue into my next question. Is it just training, or will you be able to use it in actual surgery also?
We don't do actual surgery on live patients in the facility. What surgeons do is practice doing complex surgeries in there prior to doing the surgeries on real patients.
So it's training? It's mostly a training thing?
Yes, and some research, working with the companies to develop new and better ways of doing surgery and procedures.
Okay. And then you had mentioned UNO and Metro, and what capacity will they be brought in?
Actually, we've got some very active discussions going on with Metro Community College and with UNO at this point. And we're putting together a retreat in October. They have a very high level of interest in having a network set of training facilities for the 3D and virtual immersive reality competencies and skills.
So is it possible that some of the training can happen in our south campus at Exarban?
It is, absolutely.
Okay.
What we're discussing is there are these things called development desks. We currently have just installed four because there's a learning curve. But we're, we can test and trial these things. And then UNO, Exarban, and Metro Community College are actually quite hungry. We're asking them to slow down a little bit because we want to do it right. We are anticipating that they will also have these, these development desk clusters and some of the equipment.
I appreciate the fact that you're making a collaborative effort among the institutions. And then more specific question. When I went to the demonstration this morning, one of the things they said is that all the students can have the goggles, or there can be one goggle that's fed into a computer and then put up on a screen. When it's put up on a screen, will it always be 2D, or will the holographs be able to make that 3D?
We will have the option of both. You're right on the cutting edge with that question, and that is where we want to push the limits. I can't look you in the eye now and say, absolutely, we can do that tomorrow. But that's exactly what we want to do, is push this technology to its limits. And by the way, the best people to help us do that, we're finding, are our digital natives, as we call them. We're all called digital immigrants, you know that, don't you? And they're digital natives. They are absolutely stunning with how they can push this to the next level.
Are these digital natives younger than you and I?
Oh, a lot. Me especially.
Thank you very much for your contribution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Thompson. Your experience in the academic world showed there, the questions you're asking. And I don't know a whole lot about that realm, but I do know, I think, a thing or two about the local economy and investment and return on investment. And I was just reading this independent study by this national firm, Trip Umbock, and they estimate the annual economic impact to the state of just under $40 million, 39.3. Eighteen million alone from visitors. Another 11 million from operations and 10 million from these research and collaborations. So to me, you add that to the jobs, and this is a huge opportunity for our community. People hear about the Silicon Valley. Well, this really is the Silicon Prairie, and something like this makes that have incredible meaning and definition to the people of our city. And to have it right here at the University of Nebraska Medical Center, working not only in the private industry, but with local universities like UNO and in Metro Tech, in the community college there, to me is, is a fabulous situation, and it will be transformative. So I would make the motion to approve.
Second. It's moved and seconded to approve. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. This makes me think back a couple of years, and I think you're involved with this, Mr. Barti. You and down in the legislature, they're trying to get this state to be a long-distance learning. And we passed a bill that enabled a number of these communities to become what I call wired. And I'm taking a different perspective of this. As an educator, the potential of something such as this that will evolve from this program will be unbelievable through all those schools throughout the state of Nebraska. I mean, I see even if you like homeschooling, how you could, how this will really change the world. This is going to cause educators to totally make significant changes, or they're going to be, I won't use the word replaced, but there'll be, there's a different avenue of learning. Many of us can remember, and I've also taught at college level, and I can remember so many of my classes, and I did also as a professor, is lecture. That's what it was. Everybody sits there, and the world is changing. And so from, I'm saying from kindergarten to doctorate-level students, the world is, and I just, I'm just amazed by this. It's inside, I'm just churning because of the excitement, not only for what's happening here in Omaha, but how it's gonna spread throughout. And I tell you, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Milton.
I like that term, digital natives. I have three of those living in my house right now that I have to call on to help me with all of this. You know, what I, what I like about this, and I can tell you, I've gotten some calls and some feedback in regards to, we don't need to help UNMC pay for another building or another, you know, they have lots of money, they have private donations, so they don't need the city money. And I'm not saying that those aren't, those aren't good valid points. I think we've taken a look at this, and we've reviewed this for a number of months. I can't remember when our first meeting was, but what's here before us today was not the initial proposal. So I do know that UNMC has been great, has worked with the city, has worked with, and worked with the council members with a number of different meetings that we've had with us, and kind of went through some different routes that we could take in order to support UNMC without finding a tax. And so the reason I'm supporting this today is because we're doing this, and we are actually, the majority of the money that's coming from the city is for infrastructure. And so I, I do want to make that very clear, I think, to, as we call it, the people out in TV land and the readers of the Omaha World Herald. What is this, what is this money actually paying for? We're not taking money and just saying, here, go build it. It's not kind of a check that we're writing. But it's for infrastructure, which the city typically does do for various corporations, businesses that are coming into Omaha. Because again, this is, this is how we raise revenue for the city without raising taxes. This is what I think this council, the mayor's office, the mayor's staff, this is, I think what we really need to be doing. And when you look at the figures, like Councilman Jerem said, the economic impact from this is amazing. Jarom said, the economic impact from this is amazing. Second, being kind of the leader in the, in global research, technology, training, I think Omaha's already on the map, and I think we've done a very good job at being on the map for being one of the leaders in, in research, being one of the hospitals where, you know, Ebola patients can be treated, and there's very few. I think this is taking us, in my opinion, to the next level, and that's where I think it's so important. And so the fact that our administration was able to come up with bonds that we could put in there, and also CIP money, so a lot of this investment, it's not going to be in 15, you know, two, two weeks from after we pass this, it's going to be contributions that we're going to be making kind of annually or as it's getting built, and the 5.5 million for the CIP isn't until 2022. And so I think that that is very important, because we do get the kickback of, hey, I have potholes in my street, so I think you should fix those before you give any money to UNMC. But a lot of the, a lot of what we're doing here is helping the infrastructure, the roads around where this is going to be built, which benefits all the citizens of Omaha in a multitude of ways. So I just want to say, I think I really like how this process has come about, how there, we took the time. UNMC and all of the mayor's staff met with all of us, and so that's how I think we've, we come up, we've come out with a very successful, good project, and I'm proud to be voting yes for this today. So thank you.
Mr. Garnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to thank the University of Nebraska Medical Center for this morning, my trip to the Basilica. That was pretty cool, I gotta admit. The best part was I bumped into Councilmember Pauls on the plaza.
Yeah, I was praying.
So thank you. This is going to be, this is going to be awesome for the globe.
Thank you. And then what did you call them again? Digital what?
Natives.
Digital natives. Okay, okay, all right. Yeah, because I have another word for it, but it's a little more primitive in mind, but anyway. Yeah, no. There are no more lights? It's been moved and seconded, I think.
Yes.
No more lights? Roll call.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
36 is adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7, agenda items number 37 through 41 shall be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the third reading on agenda items number 42 through 49 shall be held on September 13th. The public hearing on these items are today. Item 42, ordinance vacating 27th Avenue from North Rightaway Line of Farnham Street to the South Rightaway Line of Douglas Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item, agenda item number 62, 42 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 43, ordinance vacating a portion of the East West Alley beginning at the West Rightaway Line of South 31st Street between Marcy and Mason Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 43 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 43, ordinance vacating a portion of the East West Alley beginning at the West Rightaway Line of South 31st Street between Marcy and Mason Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 43 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
44, ordinance vacating a portion of the North-South Alley beginning at the North Rightaway Line of Mason Street between South 33rd Street and Turner Boulevard, extending north. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 44 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
45, ordinance vacating a portion of the North-South Alley beginning at the North Rightaway Line of Mason Street between South 33rd and Turner Boulevard. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 45 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
46, ordinance vacating a portion of the East West Alley beginning at the East Rightaway Line of South 38th Avenue between Farnham Street and Dodd Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 46 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 47, ordinance approving a contract allocating answering service for the City of Omaha Telephone Answering Service Project.
Public hearing on agenda item number 47 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
48, ordinance approving redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with Exarban Apartments South to implement the Exarban Apartment 3 tax and financing redevelopment project plan for the project site located at 2313 South 63rd Street, with rows of construction for a new four-story, 240-unit market rate apartment structure.
Public hearing on agenda item number 48 is today. Proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 49, ordinance to amend Chapter 21 entitled Park Development Fees to Lower Community Park Fees and provide for additional exceptions from park development fees.
Public hearing on agenda item number 49 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, third reading, public hearing on agenda items 50 through 51 shall be held on September 20th, 2016. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on agenda, the second reading, public hearing on agenda items numbers 52 through 57 shall be held on September 13th.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. No further lights? Roll call.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
We stand adjourned at 2:56 PM.